Yes, that's what I would do.
What is it?
Ten thousand in the infrastructure. And that takes transfer to future wells up to sixty-five thousand. And it puts in contingency, four thousand two hundred and fifty. Hold the phone.
Now, just Warren for a little background, we started the infrastructure reserve. Basically in the thought process of eventually water lines, water mains being replaced. So.
So yeah, you do wanna continue.
We need to really beat that up.
Right, I see what you're saying.
Because our system is fifty plus years old at this point, well parts of it.
Yeah, I see that, okay.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
So does that mean we're gonna change those numbers?
No, I think it's fine.
You're gonna put ten, you're gonna put what, so ten thousand more?
Ten thousand infrastructure, sixty-five to future wells.
Again, during the year, we could always move money out of this five hundred and ninety thousand that's not reserved.
Okay.
And we could always bump up those reserves.
Alright.
Okay. Well, that was painful.
Poof.
Well. One second, I just wanna be sure we're... Okay, I'm still off someplace. Cause you should balance now, right?
Yes, they should.
Alright, six sixty-five, six eighty-six.
How much are you off, like ten thousand?
Hold on.
How much do you have in the, on the income side?
Wait, 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 hold on. I'm six sixty-three, six eighty-six.
Six sixty-three.
So it's two grand.
What do you have for the capital projects income amount?
For the well?
Yeah.
Two twenty-three, six eighty-six.
Okay, fine.
Still off though. Alright, why were we missing, you got two, that looks like you got two grand more to spend.
Do you wanna just go through the numbers quickly?
We could, start at the top?
Yeah.
Okay, starting under, let's go through revenue first. Transfer from infrastructure eleven thousand, water billings three hundred and thirty thousand, water bill penalties one thousand, tap-ons seventy thousand. Interest on investment twenty thousand, for a total of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, plus the capital project for two thirty-three, six eighty-six. Gives you a total revenue of six hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred, excuse me, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Okay? I'm gonna move to expenses, the contingency fund shows forty-two fifty. That admin salary's coming down five hundred bucks, and that's gonna make some small adjustments in the social security stuff too.
The admin salary was seventeen five.
Seventeen, it's gonna go down, it goes to seventeen.
Why's that?
Because that's half of the salary. We good?
Okay.
Okay, and so all those numbers will trickle down a little bit. Professional services audit sixty-five hundred, services legal one thousand.
You have superintendent salary of sixty-two five?
Yeah, it's all included in there. Yeah, that's Jesse and David.
Yeah, I know, you have that, because you skipped over that number.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, yes, superintendent salary sixty-two five, yeah.
Okay, then we have the trickle down.
A little bit, a little bit of a trickle down, okay? Then you've got the audit at sixty-five hundred, legal services at a thousand, professional services at twenty-seven hundred, computer at six hundred, gas and oil twenty-five hundred. Propane eight hundred, chemicals four thousand, office supplies two hundred, shipping and crate two hundred, small tools three hundred. Membership dues and permits twenty-five hundred, travel and subsistence five hundred. Telephone seven fifty, postage is increased to sixty-five hundred, utilities at eighteen thousand, printing at three thousand. New water meters twenty thousand, water tower maintenance twenty-seven eight, vehicle maintenance two thousand, maintenance and repair twenty-five thousand. Infrastructure eleven, internet service a thousand, computer contract twenty-two hundred, beacon meter service thirty-eight hundred, training expense a thousand. Property insurance twenty-two hundred, vehicle insurance we up to fifteen hundred, public officials insurance seven hundred. And then well number six rehab twenty thousand, Hoffman Road well number ten twenty-five hundred, Rich Road well number five, five thousand. Well number eight, five thousand, Woodland Circle well eleven, five thousand. Well seven is fifteen thousand, well four is fifteen thousand, new well construction two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six eighty-six. Testing sixty-eight hundred, vehicle purchase twenty-four five. And then reserves ten thousand.
Wait, what's, can you go to the total of expenses, do you have that or no?
Yeah, six sixty-three, six eighty-six.
Six sixty-three.
Yeah, six eighty-six.
Six eighty-six, so. Okay.
So that just means you want me to put a couple thousand more into contingency?
Yeah.
Alright. And once I do the trickle down on the salary change, whatever's left, I will put into contingency.
Yes.
Make sense?
Yes.
Got it, okay, let's go down there really quick. Okay. Good to move on?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Never had so much fun in my whole life.
Yeah.
That's not true.
Never ends.
Alright, so Warren, good job. Alright, I want you to look at the revenue very quickly, you got that sheet, right?
Mm-hmm.
It was the second, it was right underwater. I kinda went back through and reworked things a little bit, having looked at where we are currently for revenue. And so now the one transfer from capital reserve I did put in there was for streets, and I'm sure we have to put some other stuff in. I just know that the capital reserve from streets is based on Janet's budget for streets and roads.
Yes.
So I get, that's the total revenue number you're looking at right there. Alright, I don't know if I got that sheet.
Okay. I don't think there were any other transfers from reserves, cause we're not buying a police vehicle.
Correct.
We don't have any infrastructure or capital projects that we're dealing with. Yeah. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if we're gonna do anything, and so is this the number we're working off of, the one point eight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, if we're going to think about moving the yard waste or expanding on it. Because we don't even have a category for the yard waste. Where, where are we putting that, if we're gonna do it?
Can we reserve for that?
It probably.
Could we reserve for that?
Well, it's kind of like, well, it's not really a capital project, it's.
Yeah, well, you have such a small mom, probably won't.
No, might not be a small mom.
You really wanna reserve or something like that?
Well, do we want, well, let me put it this way, do we want to put that in? Like our long-range plan, like a work session, let's get a quote on what that would cost, let's figure out what we wanna do.
Okay.
And then we'll budget for it when we, when we figure out what we wanna do and how much it's gonna cost.
Okay.
So why don't we just not plan for that, maybe this year, maybe, or if we do, we could do a budget amendment if we agree that that's what we want.
Alright, we'll hold off on that.
Alright.
Thank you.
So let's go talk about public safety. I updated a couple things on salaries. There was an overtime figure from twenty-three, twenty-four of two thousand dollars, and I pretty much copied the same figure over. I'm wondering now though, because salaries are up.
Well, I think, I think we should up that, and I think we should up it, not only because salaries are up, but also because we have working two new people.
Right.
So they're gonna need to have, our two experienced guys are probably gonna be working a little overtime.
Okay.
Wouldn't you just up the overtime by what you, the salary increase for the past year, like if, if you had a patrolman and you gave a ten percent increase in salary? He's got his overtime, you got a base overtime number, aren't you just gonna increase that by the same amount?
Well, because we're, like, like I said, typically, we don't have overtime. We've never, we've never run on a permanent overtime type thing. And what we, what we do is, well, what we have now, the situation is with the two new people coming on. Michael and Derek are gonna be working.
More.
A little, they're gonna be working overtime to get these guys trained until they're, for at least a short period, it's not gonna be a long-term thing. I would say.
And Michael and Derek are both hourly, not salaried?
At the moment, yes, they are both hourly, because they're still working their rotating shifts.
Yeah, okay.
Right now.
And that'll change?
Yes.
Probably.
Yes, eventually, I think it will change that Michael will be not working the rotating shift, but you know, I'm, I'm still a little.
Derek probably will though, I don't think he probably still do it anyway.
I'm, I'm still thinking that to have them there Monday through Friday during the day, maybe isn't the best use of, of Michael. I think we need to talk to Michael on that.
Okay.
But right now, he is hourly.
Okay, so then I'm gonna increase the overtime by fifty percent, what do we wanna do here?
What, what, what code is that?
Yeah, what line item is that?
It is, whoa, wait a minute, I'll tell you.
Uh, one twenty-one.
Yeah, one twenty-one, salaries.
Also falls in salary.
Oh, it's in salaries, okay, includes two K.
Yeah.
Do we wanna go ten?
You think it's gonna be that much?
No, but.
I think that's too much.
Seven?
Five.
Well, I don't know, it's, that's a little bit thin, because if you figure out, Chief's gonna be up to sixty, Derek's at fifty-five. The new guy's forty-five, and if we hire a new patrolman, he's asking for like fifty, so if you add that up, it's like two-ten. And they're gonna have a couple guys that probably gonna give some either cost of living or bonuses, we might be talking about two-seventeen.
Okay, but when you say wants fifty, that's not the same as gets fifty.
Well, no, but you got a budget, you got a budget for it. If we gotta give them fifty, we gotta expect fifty. If you take forty-eight, fine, you can.
Well. Well, don't forget, we have to set aside for.
For change of funding.
Yeah.
For employee comp. I, I think we should, I think we should do. Again, overtime is not a normal situation, I think if we do five to seven, we'll be okay.
You know, the overtime's such a small percentage of the total cost of salary, you're talking two hundred thousand dollars and we're, and we're debating two thousand dollars.
Well, and they've also, they've also, we could also offer comp time instead of overtime. That's an option that might be of a bigger value to some officers at one time or another.
I know the note includes two thousand overtime, is it even put in there? I mean, it seems like.
It's just as a, it's just as a placeholder, it's a placeholder for the fact that salaries could be up, so all the other numbers could be up.
But there's not a special account or anything for it, it still falls under the salary account.
Well, that's because it's salaries.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I just don't know why it was singled out, cause it's so insignificant.
No, it was singled out because I didn't add it in the first time.
Oh, okay.
That's why.
Okay.
Okay, so you wanna increase it to six? Sure, okay, and then what'll happen is I'll take the corresponding increase and apply it to social security, the retirement.
So we just wanna make this two-ten right now?
Two-ten.
Alright.
And then that trickles down to whatever.
Yeah, that's a trickle down. Alright. Okay, it takes care of that. We went to, let's see, what lineup item am I on, hang on a second.
Two-twelve.
You're on two-twelve, oh, uniform replacement, we put four thousand. Gas and oil sixteen thousand, tires fifteen hundred. A lot of that stuff stayed the same since we walked through it. I still need to ask Lisa about public officer's insurance, and Michael was gonna check on dues and subscriptions. We're reserving twelve thousand five hundred for vehicle purchase, right, Don?
Yes.
Okay. Most of.
That doesn't go here.
It's still an expense though, right?
No, it's not an expense, it goes in at the end.
Under reserve?
It goes in at the end, under, under reserve.
Okay, so I'm gonna pull that out.
So this.
And let me give you a new total. Which is gonna be off a little bit. Okay, that puts us in at three sixty-nine, I'm sorry, three sixty-two, seven fifty.
Three?
Three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. That's gonna go up a little bit though, cause I'll re-figure all that salary stuff.
Three sixty-two.
Three sixty-two, seven fifty. Okay, so we good to move on to fire, which hasn't changed?
Yeah, we, we will, we'll deal with that when we.
That's open.
Right.
Yeah, hopefully it goes down. Okay, so Don, you're good, clear?
Yep.
Alright. Next up, let's go to streets and roads. Streets and roads, baby.
Okay, hang on, let me get there.
How do you get there?
Okay, I'm there.
Okay.
Oh, wait, streets and roads.
Yeah, I have an order for ya.
Well, the pool was next on mine, but.
In your order?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
Oh, really?
That's your streets and roads, it's up on mine right now.
You're right, I'm sorry, pool.
Okay, now I gotta shift.
Well, I gotta shift.
Before we start, can I ask a question, I think I asked one other meeting, the Powell bill, what is that, that's a grant?
Yes.
Yep.
How long does it continue?
It's every year.
Annual thing that we get from, is it federal, state?
State.
State.
How long it's gonna continue?
Do we have to apply for, yes, there's, there's no end to this thing.
Correct.
State just keeps giving?
It's money that's, it's money that's allocated to be given out to all communities based on the amount of roads they have. The state funds, a nominal, like, again, last year, we got fifty thousand dollars, or around that.
Okay. So that shows up in the revenue part of the general fund?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's right, it's right here, the Powell bill.
Okay, yep, I was wondering what that was.
Okay, we're on the pool first, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, wait, now we're back to.
Well, I'm sorry, yes, Dan, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm just keeping you awake.
Okay, back to pool.
Okay, so really, we didn't change anything on the pool, Lisa gave me the numbers for liability and property insurance, and I need to plug that in, okay?
Can, can I ask a question, and I know we talked about this, we've got thirty thousand in there for the pool contract?
That was salaries, because we weren't sure how we would split them out.
Yeah.
Because if we don't use it, if we don't use a contract, which I think Janet, you don't wanna do.
Well, we don't, yeah, we terminated them.
Okay.
But if we have to hire people.
Then why isn't under, why isn't it under salaries?
Because we didn't break it all out, we used that contract more as a placeholder for, for salaries.
But maybe we should move it up to salaries.
Yeah, cause someone's gonna question.
I, I think we should.
Hold on, I gotcha, got it, got it, got it, hold on.
Yeah, let's move it up.
It's moved.
And then in that case, we'll have to trickle down to the social security and all that stuff.
And again, it depends on how many people, if we need how many, blah, blah, blah. I think we usually went with eight or nine people.
Okay, so that's gonna increase, when I go in and add all the social security, Medicare and stuff like that, you're gonna have an increase?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, hang on a second.
Okay.
Alright, got it. Alright, but none of the other things in terms of your numbers, Janet, have changed, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Perfect.
Is this, is the service contract in there, like for?
Pest control?
No, 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 I'm talking about the pool, you know, like Danny.
Yeah, that's under.
Is he in here?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Where is he?
Hang on, I'm gonna find him. Pool operations, no, it's not it.
Maintenance?
Could, yeah.
It's under maintenance, okay.
Okay, that left looks about right too.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, just don't forget, we're, we're planning for next year, so.
Yeah. Hold pass control, I, I know he just did, I'm gonna confirm whether or not he did, oh, that was this year anyway, never mind. But it would have to be for the fall. I mean, I have to verify whether or not he still has the hundred dollars for doing the pest control.
I have, I've got them five over two, five thousand dollars for non-capital outlight.
Yes, that's for equipment, like tables, chairs, awlows.
Be capitalized.
No, it's non-capital, non, so let me, let me confirm with him if he's gonna continue with the hundred dollars on the pool pest control, okay?
Well, how big of an area is that?
That's the fireings, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's inside the pool, and I wanted him to do outside the fence too, cause.
It's under an acre, right? Yeah, he charges by the acre.
Yeah, I think he said, well, it was a hundred dollars last year, so I'm hoping he continues with that. But alright, so let's leave it at two hundred.
Two hundred bucks, he does it twice a year?
Yes.
Alright, okay, so then Janet, you're still in there at sixty-four, one hundred, but we're gonna add all the trickle downs from salaries.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Easy peasy, moving on, yes?
Uh-huh.
Okay, into the park.
Yep.
Again, the liability thing, I got it from Lisa, I just gotta break it down.
Okay.
And then what we did was.
You got something here, check with Lisa.
That was on the liability insurance.
You, you something over there, then you wrote it for me here.
Is that, is that, is that four hundred, correct? Or you don't know?
I don't know, I mean, I think it's really close.
Okay.
She just got that stuff.
Yeah, I know. Same with property, or no?
Yeah.
That's under there too.
Yeah, yeah. My question is, and we talked about this before, and I'm sorry, I can't, I feel a little, I like I can't remember, capital outlight, what did we decide that was?
Capital or non-capital?
Well, this says capital outlight.
Capital, five hundred.
Five hundred.
I think it came off of the quote that we got from gentlemen here.
For eighty-four thousand bucks.
Wait, wait.
That's playground equipment.
So we would put that in there again?
No, no.
Wait a minute, wait, what number are you on?
Five hundred?
Five hundred, okay. Yeah, that was the.
That's zero.
Yeah.
Oh, I just got a bunch of money.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, you had zero there, on nine.
Yeah, it just wasn't corrected.
Yeah. Okay, so that really, okay, so we added, we added in Blackrock.
Yep.
Okay, and that gives you a total of one fifty-seven.
Well, now you gotta take out the eighty-four.
I did. Now you're seventy-three thousand, seven hundred, which begs this question, do we wanna have him do more? Have Blackrock do more, or?
Why don't we wait to see what our bottom line is?
Okay, that's fine.
What is it, what are we at now?
Seventy-three thousand, seven hundred. Okay.
Okay, so that's done, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me go over here.
Let's go to streets and roads.
Let's put that over there.
I may, just so you know, I'm gonna talk to Jody about betrayal improvements, if that should be some kind of a capital.
Well, and I'm gonna also apply, when we can't guarantee it, for that grant.
Um, I'm just gonna see if, if that should be under like somehow an asset or something, I, I don't know, cause that's a lot of money we're spending on a, on, on property. It's like property improvements, so I'm just gonna talk to Jody on, on how we should account for that.
Okay, streets and roads, could you do me a favor next time? Mary?
Yeah.
Put my account numbers on the new one?
Huh?
Is this the new sheet you just gave us?
Oh, my gosh.
No numbers on it.
How did I get that?
That's okay, I'm referencing over, so we're good, but yeah, in the future, if you could, please.
Well, you know, they're on my sheet.
That probably just didn't print.
It didn't print, it's probably not in the print.
Wasn't in the print margin.
Yeah.
Wrong, wrong setting.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's okay, I'm, I'm using.
Yeah, I didn't even check that, alright, so.
We can follow along.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it here, so we're good.
So I don't know that we really made any big changes, did we, I mean, we.
Yes, street markings.
What do you got?
Three thousand, I couldn't get him down to zero.
Ooh, that's not bad though.
No, I went from ten.
What's that?
Street markings.
North and South Shamrock.
Oh, they took it off?
Yeah, down, street markings right there.
Just.
So that's three thousand.
Three thousand.
Okay, that's actually pretty good.
Negotiations. Okay.
Okay, did we change anything else?
There's, no, wait, no, okay, wait, we gotta do this.
We reduced, uh, we reduced storm.
No, that wasn't it, right-of-way Powell bill.
No, that's, that's, I don't know why these are on here.
Can we take these off?
I don't know, I've gotta do the first Powell bill report, because I don't know what they want broken down.
Into, okay.
When you file for your Powell bill.
Okay.
Stuff. So, cause you have to account for expenses, and I don't know what kind of detail they're, they're looking at.
Oh, okay, that's why I think we left it then, okay. I think that was the only change I had. Yeah, everything else was okay.
I know you were planning on doing sealing.
That was under.
I think we combined, didn't we?
Seal, seal, crack pouring, you had, we, she put in.
Okay, crack pouring and seal coating, how come that doesn't have any money in it?
It does, I've got, oh, you're right.
But then we combined.
We had a big discussion about crack pouring.
Wait, 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 no, you know, Janice brought up a good point regarding the Powell bill. It depends on, you know, if we seal coat versus crack fill versus patch, they may want us to break it out per service. So that's why we left it.
And, and if we're, if we're seal coating or patching our parking lots, that's different from doing it to the roads. Correct, so we can't, we can't co-mingle those two things.
So I'm wondering if we had to create a new category for seal coating?
We put, we put.
We talked about that.
We threw all the money into, remember, we, while we were talking about putting it all into patching, and it's gone.
And we can't do that.
Right, and we're not gonna do that, so.
We gotta put it in someplace.
Where did it?
Okay, so now you wanna know where everything went again, right?
It is gone.
Okay, I can, I can recreate it.
Okay, so let's go, let's go up to paving, we have.
Wait, you gotta give me a minute here.
Maybe it's at a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Why, Janice, look at that, my question is like sealing the parking lot up here, why is that in the streets and roads, sealing the parking lot? I think that's just not part of the administration of maintaining the building here, and, you know, we have the office building and stuff like that. It seems like our driveway would not be part of.
It technically isn't, but I think because Janet has relationships with the vendors, it kinda just falls under her.
But still shouldn't just fall into the administration for out of the streets and roads, but you're only gonna seal it every couple of years and stuff like that. So if you really wanna create a, a line item for sealing the driveway.
Well, we might wanna seal roads at some point.
Right, that should, no, I know, that should be in there, but that's, I'm seeing.
But will the Powell bill give it to us?
Probably not the private per of the.
If we put it under anything else?
I don't, that's, I can't, until I file that report, I won't know.
So why don't we just leave it under there?
But I can't imagine, uh, Bill.
What he's saying.
What's probably meant for your parking lot, I mean, the Powell bill's part of maintaining roads, highways and stuff like that. So I don't think you're gonna be allowed to take that money, that grant money and do the repair of your parking lot.
That's what I just.
Yes, so that seems to me that should be a building administration.
So what you're saying is you don't think the Powell bill will apply the seal coating for a parking lot?
Correct, right, no, that's, that, we won't, it's public roads.
Okay.
It's the only thing that money is for.
Okay.
And I can see where you're saying it should be under building.
Maintenance.
Building and, it's more like building and property maintenance.
Okay, so, but that's not under my budget.
Exactly, it should probably be under.
Okay, well, here's the ceiling.
Admin, yeah.
Okay, so, but do we wanna come back to the admin, or can I give that to you now?
Well, don't give it, don't give me the sealing for the parking lots now.
Okay, so hang on, so here is crack filling was forty, forty-nine hundred, okay?
Okay, is that going into crack pouring, seal coating, Powell bill?
Yes, yes.
Forty-nine hundred.
So that's five thousand?
Okay, so wait, where was, where am I? What number, oh, I don't know.
There's no number.
Patching.
No.
Top third, go down, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eight there.
Under seal coating?
Yeah, it was five thousand, the current budget, it'll be five thousand the next budget.
Okay, so we're gonna make it... Where am I putting it?
Seal coat, crack pouring, seal coating, Powell bill, five thousand dollars.
Five thousand.
Okay.
Gotcha, okay, so that's gonna be five.
Okay.
All right, so that, that's seal coating, hold on, I got one more. Okay, so then I have...
Patching, no, red bull.
Wait, now, I'm gonna have to break this out because now for the park, I have seal coat, the park.
Okay, and that should be under park.
That should be in the parks and the wreck.
Okay. Seal coat, park, that, now I'm gonna have to break this out, striping, hang on, I need my calculator. Okay, that, that was gonna be the four thousand.
For the park?
Yeah.
So that goes under probably maintenance at the park, I would think.
Right, maintenance at the park adds four to that, so now you're up to...
Fifty-five.
Right.
Okay, so wait, let me go back to park. Okay, hang on, hang on. Streets and roads, where's my park?
Okay, that's fifty-five.
Yes, here's my park. Okay, so park was, what did I say?
It's the four thousand, so now it's fifty-five, 'cause you had fifteen hundred on maintenance.
Okay. All right, so now we're back to streets and roads, right?
Right, back to patching.
Patching.
One above crack pouring.
Okay, so patching was...
For streets.
Okay, I know, but we had this discussion. So the seal coating is something else, the crack filling, we already have that. Patching, I thought we were going to leave that, drop that down to...
It's at nothing right now.
Um, well, give me five hundred there.
Well, there's, and there's two patching.
There's two patching, yes.
There's patching for Powell bill and there's patching on not Powell bill.
Okay, but we took out the one patching.
All right, what are you patching, are you patching streets?
If we have a...
It's streets, right?
Right.
Then it'll be Powell bill, so put it under the Powell bill.
Okay, and how much are we putting, Janet?
You know what, give me the, give me eight hundred, because who knows how many potholes we're gonna have.
All right, do a thousand.
A thousand, okay. Are we gonna delete this other patching then?
No, because say if you're patching a parking lot, or you're patching something at the park.
Oh, then it has to, okay.
It probably wouldn't be streets and roads, but let's just leave it under Powell bill.
Yeah, I think one patching is probably if you have a, say, a main break out there, and you had a contractor.
You mean like what happened on Bobolink?
Just do that one little square, you're probably not be able to use Powell bill money. But if you're going and patching a road that has, like I said, a series of potholes, we have to go in and repair all the potholes, that's probably Powell, at least...
Yes, I agree, yeah.
Good rationale behind it. And so this other, the second patching may have been just, you know, you charge X, you know, X amount for a patching, X amount.
Okay, so we made your patching on Powell bill a thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
What else do we need to fill in?
You got the five thousand, not Powell.
That's not, yeah, but that's on, that's over to the park.
There was a question.
No, on seal coating.
I got five thousand in seal coating.
That's going over to administration, right? Five thousand.
Crack, you have crack pouring for five thousand.
That's...
Your streets and roads.
Yeah, I'm on streets and roads.
And then the Powell bill, that one.
Okay, that was the one I gave you, that was the five thousand, right?
Right.
Crack pouring is five thousand dollars, that's the question, yes, okay, fine, all right, done with that.
All right.
And you got the three thousand in there for street markings, right?
Yeah, I got that, so let me give you a new total.
Well, before we do that, I have a question, I haven't, go ahead, you finished, then I have a question. The question I have is, under grant, the grant money, the Powell bill money, apparently, they will pay for consulting, but don't we have a... Aren't we gonna hire a guy to come up, assess what has to be done for the roads and stuff in the village, are we gonna do that now?
No, they wanted twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
But if the, if the state will pay for it, well, I, I mean, it's still taxpayer money, but it seems to me, we should take advantage of somebody with the professional knowledge of when to repair roads, prioritize what roads are being repaired.
We're doing that.
Wouldn't these...
I thought we were doing that with the paper, right?
We are.
Yeah, all right.
We are, and that's free.
No...
He's the consultant you're using though. I mean, he's a, he's a contractor user, repair the roads, and it's good, you have a good relationship with him.
I do.
But it seems to me, if we can have, take advantage of this Powell bill for consulting.
See, these are very old, these are very old accounts, and I don't know if Powell bill still, still gives us money. They give us money, and it's not a lot of money.
Fifty thousand.
It's better used, it's better used for roads. Right, painting and things like that, right now.
So what happens if we don't use them, is it fifty thousand annually?
Oh, we use it.
Well, that'd be gone.
It's always used.
We always use it.
It's, it's always used.
And it makes sense to put it towards the maintenance of the roads.
That's where it goes.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so I got a, anything else on, on streets and roads?
No.
Okay, you've got a new total of four hundred and four, I'm sorry, two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred.
Can I ask a question?
Fire away.
Um, we have maintenance, labor, and material for eleven-three, what is that?
That is a contract with...
Oh, that's Ricky?
Yeah.
Or not Ricky, um...
Yeah, that's landscape.
Yeah, Ricky, okay.
Okay.
And then...
If we had a number there, we'd know that.
I'm so sorry about that.
A non-capital outlay of nine, what is that?
What did we do?
Well, that's in the current budget, and it's just carried, it's just carried over.
And we've never spent anything, you've never used it, never used it.
I don't know why we put it in there.
Would we like it to go away?
Take it away.
I don't know why we would have it.
Take it away.
Okay.
We, we look at the prior year, back in two thirty-two thousand, three hundred.
Well, that's what's nice about it.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
We have a, we don't have any prior years on that. Non-capital outlay. Well, you know what, maybe we should, oh, did we have a separate, we had a separate category for street markings.
Yeah, that wouldn't, I don't understand what would be a non-capital outlay.
Can we take that out then?
Eliminate it.
It is gone.
Okay, so now we're at...
Your new total is two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three fifty.
Two thirty-one.
Two thirty-one, three fifty.
Okay, why don't we go get a fifty when we just took out nine thousand and we were at three hundred?
Hold on, let me tell you.
We were at two, two forty, three hundred, I thought you said.
Took off the nine hun, nine thousand.
Yeah, but there should be a fifty.
Should be five hundred, I mean, there should be a five hundred there, yeah, there would be five hundred there.
Well, she said fifty.
And I'm summoning in Excel, that's really weird.
I'm thinking she means five hundred, right? Me, fifty dollars, or five hundred, oh, right there, eight, eight hundred fifty dollars, right?
Yeah, you're fifty, two thirty-one, fifty.
Okay, so what's your total now?
Two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty bucks.
Okay, all right.
You wanna make landscape bits five hundred or five, so you don't have the fifty dollars.
Yeah, he wants to go with the thousand.
All right, fine.
You just ain't that...
You have fifty dollars, I can't believe you, you're talking about one point, what? One point eight eight dollars, we're worried about fifty.
So now changes...
Two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred.
Okay, thanks, Lord.
Okay, we over to admin?
Ward's looking awful.
Yeah, let's go to admin, if we can get through this.
Okay, so I'm done, right?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll keep your numbers for the ceiling of the, of the parking lot.
I just have one more question, and this has to do with going back.
To what?
To the pool, there's that three seventy-five, line item, there's nothing at all in there for it, and I know we were waiting for an assessment.
Wait, 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 where are you?
Do you wanna put a placeholder in there?
No, because what we're gonna do is if we decide to do it, we're gonna transfer out of the general fund, aren't we?
Yes.
I think that was what we decided to do, instead of trying to guess.
Right.
We sort of agreed we'd do a budget that month.
Oh, you know what?
Is there a...
We need to put in, because it could, the assessment is probably gonna happen in July, I need fifteen hundred dollars for that.
All right, hold on.
And when you say pool repairs, is that like repairs to the building itself, if you've got the, you've got showers in there, restrooms in there? Is it other damage? Should maybe something in for pool repairs and that, or is that maintenance, government maintenance, I guess?
We have an expense for pool renovation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so where do we wanna put this?
Can we put it in one ninety-nine, planning, and I think that's supposed to be...
Well, there's a consulting and engineering.
Oh, that's a good one.
That's a great place for it, seriously, 'cause that shows that you're looking at...
Janet, what's your total?
Okay, wait a minute.
For that?
Wait, 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 what number are you looking at, play me a minute, okay, so that would be...
One ninety-eight.
What, no.
Under pool.
Okay, but what, sixty-one, twenty?
One ninety-eight.
One ninety-nine.
One ninety-eight.
Okay, so we're gonna put what in there?
Fifteen hundred.
What's the pool assessment costing?
About fifteen hundred.
Okay.
So that goes under the consulting and engineering?
So I was at sixty-four, one, one hundred. And add fifteen hundred.
Yep.
So sixty-five, six hundred, right?
I had seventy-three, seven hundred, how the heck did I have that? What's the new number for the pool?
The new number, sixty-five thousand, six hundred.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Did, and...
Oh, I see what I was...
Not to belabor the pool engineering stuff though, so you have the fifteen hundred under consulting and engineering for the assessment.
Sixty-five thousand, six hundred.
Right.
It should, yeah, it'll be completed shortly.
Okay, I'm gonna move this on to admin, unless we have more questions on the pool.
But I'm just thinking, should there be anything in there for planning? I mean, so if you decide that you can't, that you're gonna make, well, you're gonna take it out of the...
It's all gonna come as a budget in the end, right? Pretty much, you're gonna be a budget in the end.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna move us over to admin.
All right.
Okay, admin salaries, that number will drop to one seventeen, and I'll make the corresponding changes in the other deductions that follow, okay? I'm trying to think what else we really changed in here. The per-contract stuff, I've got all the liability stuff, so that's good.
Are those good numbers, or is...
Those numbers actually are, I think, gonna be pretty good, but I haven't not really scrubbed that liability, I have not scrubbed it, so...
Those have not been confirmed, okay.
Yep, I, you know what I did, I kinda looked at what we were paying this year, and most of those things are pretty...
They're pretty stable, actually.
Yeah, that, you don't, that stuff doesn't move a lot. Okay, do we need to put something in here for, are we resealing the parking lot out here?
Yes.
Can we just back up one second on bonds, which is four fifty-three?
Yep.
Can we change that to a thousand?
Yep, we sure can.
Okay.
All right.
I wonder if that would be considered a non-capitalized asset or a capitalized asset for the ceiling?
The ceiling is not, be.
Or maintenance?
That's maintenance.
It's maintenance, not capitalized, you can capitalize seal.
We've got seventy-eight hundred in there for maintenance.
Add whatever the cost of sealing the driveway and parking lot is.
You said this, the ceiling was five thousand, is that correct, Janet?
Uh, back up for a minute, I hate to do this to everybody.
That's all right.
The park for the seal coating, for the parking lot, is four thousand, do I have a, did I give you that?
Uh, wait a minute, let me get it.
We have, we have maintenance of, yes, yes, we added it to maintenance, 'cause you have fifteen hundred in there for maintenance.
Yeah, yeah.
So hang on, I just didn't put it on mine.
That's all right, you're good.
Good.
Hang on, let me put it in mine. So that was four thousand, I forgot to write it down. All right, so we're good there, all right, so now you want town hall?
Yeah.
Three thousand.
Okay, so that...
Three?
That's gonna take you to ten thousand, eight hundred in line item five-one-one, correct?
Ten thousand ones, just make it eleven thousand.
Okay. Okay.
New total?
Hang on one sec.
Mary?
What are we making this, eleven?
No, ten.
Yes.
Eleven.
Oh, eleven.
Eleven, bro.
Okay.
And the grand prize winner is... Three hundred and sixteen thousand, nine fifty. That doesn't seem right, how did it go down?
It's gotta go up.
Yep, it does. I dropped that one salary five hundred. Three sixteen, well, it's coming up, three sixteen, nine fifty, what else did we do?
Did you add, did that seventy-eight hundred?
Janice, there are...
Went to eleven thousand.
Mary, you have, under dues and subscriptions, there's a thirty-five hundred, but it's in a different font, it's like a...[1528.32] It's like a.
Would you tell me the line item number?
Uh, four ninety-one on the last sheet.
Four ninety-one.
Is that in there, thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five hundred's in there, yeah. What else did we touch?
That was it, just line down five eleven.
So what are you short? You have three seventeen?
Well, it should've gone up.
Unless I took something out when I was doing this and did some some. I've got three hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty.
Okay.
That can't be right.
Yeah, but I'm summoning Excel, so how could it be wrong?
Right.
Are all your columns, are all your rows included?
Just, no, that, that's a, that's a very reasonable question, Christine. That's a very, very reasonable question.
It should've gone up thirty-two hundred. That was the difference between the eleven thousand versus the seventy-eight hundred.
I wonder if that thirty-five hundred was not added into being?
Thirty-five hundred not being there.
I don't know, but it's three sixteen, nine fifty, right?
No, it's not. Because we went from maintenance of seventy-eight hundred dollars to eleven thousand.
Right.
There's a difference of thirty-two hundred dollars there.
And you went from bonds from a seven hundred to a thousand. So three hundred there.
Where are the bonds? I didn't put that in.
At the bottom of the page on, uh, four fifty-three.
So you went from seven hundred to what?
A thousand.
You guys, I'll add it up by hand.
So that's another three hundred, right? Yep. So it should be thirty-five hundred dollars.
Mary, she had a question.
The, um, number, if you look at the, the, the line item four nine one.
Yep.
It's thirty-five hundred, but it doesn't have a comma in it. It's like not the same.
Was that, is that the reason?
I would, well, I don't know, but I would, I would delete it and put the thirty-five hundred back in and see if that.
Yeah.
Helps with your Excel spread, you know?
Cause that's, what we're missing is the thirty-five hundred dollar difference.
Yeah, there was a subscription, yeah.
Christine, you're hired. Oh, too late, we already did.
Sorry.
No, no, no. But it's still, it's still three sixteen, nine fifty.
No, it's not.
Even if it's thirty-five hundred?
Okay, I'm not, I'm not a real brain, but I'm using a calculator.
Which you get.
And I'm telling you, we're short through thirty-five hundred dollars. You added in three hundred from four five three. And you added in, um, the difference, when I say thirty-two hundred dollars?
Thirty-five.
Under maintenance, that's thirty-five hundred dollars.
And I dropped five hundred out of admin salaries.
Minus five hundred.
Yep.
Okay, it's still, oop, that's three thousand.
Does it do the math automatically on the, on the social security and all that?
No.
Okay.
It does not, that's gotta be done by hand.
All right, so that still needs to be fixed.
Double check. I'll do that. So I don't understand why Excel would do that, right? Okay.
Maybe say a math, please, but.
Let me give you the total.
You will check, I'm.
All right. Let me just flip this over, cause I have the numbers here. Okay, so I'm just gonna run through the totals that we have, okay?
Okay.
And then we can go back.
Somebody wanna inter, as you're running, are you gonna, you're gonna remove each one of the totals out, is what you're saying?
Yep.
So when you're doing that, someone type them in?
Yep. Okay, let's go to public safety.
Oh, all of them, I thought it was, I bet you're doing administrator.
Um, can, can we?
We have another reserve.
Do whatever you want.
Um, no, it's. Yeah, okay.
Okay, under police department, you've got three hundred sixty-two thousand, seven fifty. Understand that that's gonna go up a little bit when I remove all the social security stuff, okay? The fire department remains unchanged at this point at three twenty-nine, five hundred.
Excuse me.
Then we got the pool. At sixty-five, six. Again, remembering I gotta put the social security in because I moved that stuff to, um, uh, salaries. And then on the park. Seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred.
Seventy-three, you said, right?
Seventy-three, seven hundred, was it?
Yeah, we, we came up with seventy-three.
Seven hundred?
Did you add the four thousand in under maintenance?
And you also increased, you had ceiling up or two, fifty-five hundred, fifteen hundred?
I got seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the four, okay.
Yes, yes, you're right.
Okay. If we go to streets and roads. I showed two hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred.
That's correct.
Okay.
We did the park, okay, we did that.
And so under admin, I've got three sixteen, nine fifty. Which is disputed, so I'll double check it, but I'll bet you somehow that's gonna be right.
Okay.
Okay, that gives us a total of. Okay, that gives us a total of? One million, three hundred eighty-four thousand dol, one million, three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars.
That's it?
Yeah. Yeah. One million, three hundred eighty-four thousand.
That's good.
Hey, we done good.
Revenues are what, one point eight?
Now, what is not included in there though?
All the reserves.
Is we need to go to talk about reserves.
Transfer to reserves.
Yep.
Yep.
So we have. Basically, we're looking at one eight forty-six.
One four three.
Minus one three eight four. So we have four hundred and six, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Is that about what you had last year?
Last year, we reserved, um, three hundred and something.
Well, let me ask this, do you think my projected revenue is too high?
Yeah, last year we reserved three hundred thousand, so.
Um. I, if, well, on the taxes, no. Sales taxes, what we reserved last year.
I didn't move it.
Right.
And there's a good chance that will go up this year because of the open.
And the other, the franchise, the, um, these unrestricted intergovernmental, um, is that off of the county?
Yeah, I took those off, I took those off the, um.
And is that what we used last year?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Powell bill is, is what it is, I think.
Hang on a second, I wanna check something.
I don't know, do we want the building permits at high?
Is that what you were?
That, was that last year?
Let me look, let me look, let me look, let me look. Building permits. Um, as of April, twenty twenty-four, for seventeen thousand, six fifty.
Okay, but it's April.
All through April, yeah.
Yeah, and more people do building, I mean, more people get building permits and do stuff in the summer, you know?
I don't think it's, it slowed down this year compared to last year. And I think the pace we're on now, it's probably.
We can change it, I mean, if, if you wanna take it down, we can take it down.
I don't think we're gonna take it down significantly.
I would, because I think it's.
Down to fifteen?
I don't think it would matter to take it, no?
We budgeted fifteen for, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars of revenue for this year, okay? As of the end of April, we were seventeen thousand, six fifty.
Okay, but that includes, oh.
Windy Ridge.
Pool permits, fence permits.
We do have, we do have twenty-nine, twenty-four or whatever homes going in Windy Ridge, which we're not gonna have next year.
Correct.
So that's, that'd be less.
But you're gonna have fence permits, debt permits.
But that's not that much.
That's, that's not that much, you're right. I don't care, if you wanna take it to fifteen thousand, I don't care.
Really, a building permit, you're took, you're talking four hundred dollars for a building permit. So.
I would take that down. That's just my opinion.
We could take it down to twelve if you want. What, what did we have for last year?
Fifteen thousand.
You know what, why don't we leave it at fifteen? Cause we slowed down in term, I mean, compared to what Lisa was going through last year.
What did we have, thirty-nine homes under construction or beginning process of under construction?
Okay, but those have already put in for the building permits.
Take it down to fifteen.
Yeah.
Fifteen's about a good number, you know, year to date.
Yep.
As of the end of March is the last one.
I didn't put any pool fees in.
No.
Park fees are five hundred.
I'll need that.
Yeah, I think. I don't, and those other taxes, you can just, that's a.
Because we're looking at increasing the park fees.
Yeah, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't change it now.
No, no, I'm just saying, leave, leave what we have there.
Such a small amount, five hundred alone.
And I left utility franchise tax and telecommunications tax the same as last year. We're actually ahead, um.
But those technically are going down as, as.
So I mean, I left them the same as last year.
Yeah. That's fine.
And another one, hang on one second.
I see. On the income side, I would rather err on the lower amount, that's all.
All right, then I would say for video programming tax, um, man. That's every quarter.
What is that for?
I don't know, we spent twenty thousand.
No, it's income.
Yeah, the standard revenue, yeah, the local video revenue.
How much you got in there?
The local, the.
Twenty thousand.
The local video revenue as of April was nineteen thousand. There's another payment coming because it looks like that pays every quarter.
Is that the lease on the, on the tower?
And it's about six grand a pop.
Towers and stuff?
No.
It's what?
It's about six thousand dollars a pop.
But what's it for?
Yeah, in the little, sixty-five.
It's, you know how you, when you, when you, um, it could be something like in your cable bill. Oh, that, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right. That tax, it's.
And we get a portion of that.
Yes.
Okay, so what you're not paying, cause God has a red box, now you're just paying for streaming it.
Yeah. So what I would do.
Some will do that alone, then, is twenty.
Twenty's probably good, you got nineteen, you already spent nineteen this year. Or not, Ben, you already got nineteen in this year.
All right, you wanna leave it at twenty?
Yep.
I, I don't think the revenue is off that much.
Okay.
To tell you the truth, I really don't. So.
I'll just take building permits down two grand.
Yep, yeah.
So it'll take us to one million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, one forty-three. Is that right?
Say that again, one million.
I'm gonna take the building per, oh, that's not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause I'm taking twenty-five hundred off, dang it. It's one million and I lose my calendar.
Wouldn't it be six forty-six?
Seven ninety four, one forty-three.
Cause you're taking off two thousand dollars.
It would be one million, eight thirty, thirty-one.
No. Not thirty-one, we're taking off twenty-five hundred bucks.
Yep.
Oh, twenty-five, I'm looking at fifteen thousand, I'm sorry.
Where's zero at five hundred?
Uh, went from seventeen five to fifteen thousand.
It's gonna be one million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, six forty-three.
Oh, there it is, fine, okay.
Okay, well, either way, we're at basically, um. What did we say?
Now you got four hundred fifty-seven, five to reserve.
Say it again?
Four hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred. But now, can we look at reserves? Can we go there now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Cause this is the part I'm probably not really too skilled in. What we've requested, and this needs to be added to the expenses already, is one seventy-seven, five.
Why's that?
Well, because if you reserve it, isn't that an expense? If there's, if you.
No, no, if you're reserving, you're taking it from your leftover.
Right.
Between your, so the fact that your reserves, you're taking it and putting it aside.
Right, but the number here, the one seventy-seven, five hundred, that's what we wanna reserve, so that would come out of that four fifty-seven, five.
Yeah, cause you've already, yes, yes.
Right, exactly, all right, okay. So, I mean. You might increase the employee compensation fund.
Well.
Man.
Where is our, um, where are our reserves at right now? Right now, we have reserves. Our street fund will have, we're using a hundred thousand of it. Do we wanna put a hundred thousand back in, which we are? So we're keeping it?
Does that include drainage? That helps us deal with drainage stuff too, right?
It can.
I think we should, yeah, I would take the hundred thousand and reserve it.
Wow, why, why am I not surprised, Janet? I'll take a hundred thousand. Well, we've got a hundred thousand in there, you wanna give it another hundred thousand?
Yes.
Two hundred thousand.
Last year we did, but we've got a million in there, we have a million reserved now, we really, do we?
Yeah, you've got a lot, you've got a lot to do there.
Right, we, we upped the reserves.
So why not only do one street?
Well, you don't have to only do one street.
Okay.
You could do more, okay.
But you need to tell me, so I put it in.
But we don't know, that's why.
We need to look at the.
I've got one street for this year, I think I'll add another one next year then, cause I have another one. Okay, so twenty-four, twenty-five, I have one street, which is gonna be Bottom Lake. Then I have another one for twenty-five, twenty-six, I'll add one there.
Yeah, you could do that.
And it'll, it'll already be reserved, so we're gonna increase the street reserve to two hundred thousand?
No, I think we can leave it at, well, let's, let's go through and see what else we have. We've got, we've got transfer to capital reserve, which we did a resolution that we wanted to continue funding capital reserve for.
Every year.
Future project that we might want to do.
Okay, so that's given.
Okay, then we have police vehicle twelve, five, I think we should up that to maybe?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand, cause we have right now in our vehicle fund, police vehicle reserve, we have eleven thousand. And that's not.
What is it, what is it?
So what year you gotta put?
From five to fifty.
Forty-eight thousand.
Yeah, they're saying next year, put fifty in there.
What have we got in there now?
Eleven.
Eleven, seven fifty.
Cause we don't wanna, cause we, we.
If we've got it, I'd rather reserve for the whole vehicle and then there's no scramble.
Yeah, I would put fifty in there. Or forty, at least.
I mean, there's no guarantee, especially on, on these vehicles.
Go fifty.
Yep.
I'm in for fifty.
Ditto.
Whoops, add another zero, then you're in for fifty.
Separation allowance, you know, I think we should up that a little, cause right now, separation allowance is at eighty-five, well, it's at eighty-five thousand. And we don't have any police officers right now that are close to using that.
And we're giving it fifteen, which is gonna take it to a hundred.
I think we're okay then.
Okay. I'd love to say transfer to the pool main reserve, but we don't know what to do. Yet.
I, I would go with the one twenty-five.
And then we wouldn't have to pull out of the general fund.
Yep.
If we do it.
I mean, as long as we have the money.
One twenty-five?
Yeah. That's if we can do it.
Well, I, I would consider. I'm hesitating doing that.
Sets an expectation.
Well, no, not only that, but once it's in a reserve.
It's reserved.
It's reserved.
Oh, I see.
Then we can't do it.
I, I think we need to.
I think we shouldn't do it, I think it, we need to leave that as a budget amendment coming out of the general fund, it's just cleaner.
I, and I'd rather see, I mean, capital reserve could be used for anything, it could be used for.
Could use it for the expansion of the waste, the, the yard waste stuff?
Probably.
Well, heck.
We could, we could probably use it for that, we could use it for.
Five hundred thousand in there?
If really push came to shove and we wanted to redo the pool complex, put something new in the pool, you know, if. That's a capital expenditure as well, so. I think if we wanna up anything.
How about we put a hundred and fifty in there?
In where?
Capital.
Capital.
Yeah, because e- especially for the yard waste.
Or just dump with the balance which you had.
I mean, I don't think it'll cost that much, I'll make sure it doesn't cost that much.
If it's in capital reserve and there's other stuff we can do.
Yeah. It's for any capital improvement, right. So let's put it in there.
Hundred fifty, total?
What?
Put a hundred, bring that total from twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
I think so. How much we got there?
Hang on a second, I'll tell you, I still have to add that up. We're leaving streets at a hundred thousand, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's three hundred thousand. Um, separation allowance, the fifteen we're putting in there brings that fund to, um. A hundred thousand, we don't really need to use that this year. And then we've got twenty-five thousand in the employee compensation fund, that gives us a total of three hundred and forty thousand. Which gives us another, um, hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred.
That we can use, reserve somewhere?
Yep.
How much?
That's gotta be more than that, should be.
Let me just check my math here.
That seems awfully high. I, I think we're missing some expenses somewhere, for some reason.
No, I don't necessarily disagree with you.
Because. I would be surprised if we had, if we had more than three hundred thousand to, um, leftover to reserve.
What do you think we missed?
I don't know. But, again, this is, I think, we've wrapped up this budget very closely, close enough for.
I can, you can do the budget in that, I mean, that, because that's, that just posts what we have, meaning still, you still make changes to it. But I'm concerned that if we're missing something big, we gotta find it.
We have a sheeting place that shows what the, not so much the revenues are, but with prior general fund expenses where. We compare like the year, you know, twenty-two and twenty-three.
Well, it's in these, it's in some of these spreadsheets.
One that came out recently?
It's the one that's right in front of us. Um, some, some of them have it and some don't.
Water.
Water, now that's just, this is just the general fund, it's not the water.
Yeah, you have the, I'm just looking at the water. Yeah, the, yeah, the, I'm just looking at the water fund.
I'm just concerned about your math on the, on the spreadsheets, that's all. The totals on the spreadsheet.
I'm a little concerned about it too, except, I mean, you're summoning Excel, so how could it not be right?
Yeah, as long as the cells are included.
Yeah, they're all in there. But I can go back and double, and hand check on it.
So when's our, when's our public hearing?
Not till the twentieth.
Okay.
I think, sorry, I think it's not till the twentieth.
Okay.
Lisa has to post tomorrow, okay?
For what?
The budget amendment ordinance has to be available for public view tomorrow.
Okay.
And I, I mean, I think we can do that, let me just double check this.
Well, all you have to do is, is fill in these, and what I would do is... So what day do we do the public meeting? So I would put the balance in contingency.
That's what I would do too.
Really, that's all, that's... Any, any overage, I don't think, I don't think we should be reserving every penny, if anything, um...
Well, and if we put it in contingency and we find mistakes, you just pull it out of contingency, that's real easy.
Right.
Janice, you said you had a, a spreadsheet with general fund expenses, but have this to the prior years, I'm gonna throw my stuff, I can't find...
Well, the water fund is, the water fund is like that.
Okay, how about the general fund though?
It's, it's not on this spreadsheet.
Yeah, I don't have any spreadsheet, I've got all the spreadsheets we've had since we started this thing back in January, they all...
They...
We've never looked at prior years, so how do we, you know, maybe if we look at the expense in twenty, in the general fund, our expenses, it's like twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thing is that, that the stuff has changed so much with inflation over the years, the past couple of years, and it's really...
But you don't think you have a feel that we're missing something big?
No, it's, we're not missing anything big, my, my main concern is just that all the numbers are where they're supposed to be in the spreadsheet, that's all. And our revenue is up, last year's revenue was, I think, one point six, right, Mary?
Yeah. But if you look at what it totals out to right now, as of April, it was one point seven mil. So we're actually up a hundred thousand over our projection, and we still got two months to pop on these sheets.
So I have a question, we, we scheduled what day for the general, the public?
Well, I'm checking with Lisa right now.
Cause I don't have it on my calendar.
Didn't she text everybody?
You mean email?
I don't think so.
No.
What I would do...
Well, here it is, are you, it's, it is a text, hello everyone, we need to reschedule the budget public hearing for a later date in June. Are you available on Thursday, June twentieth at six P M?
Oh, okay, that one.
That is the budget, that is the public hearing for the budget.
Yeah.
We got that, right?
Yes.
June what?
June twentieth.
June twentieth at six P M.
Okay, hang on, let me look. Alright, it's confirmed then, right?
Yes, it is.
So this budget needs to be available tomorrow.
The budget amendment needs to be available tomorrow.
Well, that's basically the...
Right, but it's, but it's the big numbers. It's not every line item, I have the copy of what Lisa posted for the budget amendment.
Okay.
And it looks just like this.
Okay.
So it's not in detail.
Okay.
It, it, well, it's detailed, but it's more of a high level look.
Yes, the totals for the park.
Yep.
Yeah, cause last year we were one, one point six. Six P M.
Okay, got it.
Oops, I'll be here. Good to know.
You might have to do it without me.
Okay, and then next Tuesday, after the council meeting, we have the citizen participation meeting.
That is next Tuesday.
Yeah. Yeah, alright. Okay. I will double check our totals, I'll make the, what do you need?
What you, what I just gave you?
I'll do the trickle downs, um, that changed the, all the, you know, Medicare and social security and stuff like that. Is there anything else I need to do?
Take your stuff.
Yeah, last year we ended up preserving about two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Okay, are we good?
Yep.
Okay, so we're wrapping this up. Budget numbers look good. Income, revenue looks good.
Revenue looks good, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, ready to close this meeting?
Make a motion.
Okay, make a motion to close this special work session regarding budget finalization.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at two fifty.